Good evening, and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education work session. Today is Monday, February 5th, 2018, and we are holding our work session this evening at Mount Pleasant Middle School, the new facility that was recently opened for the beginning of this school year. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And our first item is just a welcome to the Town of Mount Pleasant special guest. We have with us tonight from the Town Board Lori Farr, if you would stand up, please. Thank you for being here, and Steve Ashby, who happens to also work at Mount Pleasant High School, and we have the Town Administrator Randy Holloway. Thank you for joining us tonight. And before we set the agenda, I'd like to invite Mr. Tim Farrar, the Principal of Mount Pleasant Middle, just to say a few words about how they're enjoying their new facility.
Yes, thank you.
If you push the button there.
Hold it down, alright. I'd like to welcome you to Mount Pleasant Middle School. It is great to be here, and it's great to have you guys tonight. First off, I want to thank you for giving us a new school. This has been long overdue, and we are just loving it. We have moved in, and there's been some growing pains and moving pains, but we're getting through that, and we look forward to being at 100% capacity with the fields opening up this spring and just everything going well. And I just want to thank you for approving this replacement school because it has just been a beacon for the community. I look forward to years down the road that this school is going to continue to attract people to this Mount Pleasant area and Cabarrus County. I want to just highlight a few things that we're doing here at Mount Pleasant. We have an outstanding leadership program that we started this year, and we are looking forward to training everyone in the seven habits of effective people. Our staff and students are learning this, and we're looking to expand our leadership program into our kids and the community as well. You'll be hearing more about this down the road. We started a new ag program this year with an FFA chapter, and that has just blossomed, and we've got some great things coming with that. We have a one-to-one initiative with Chromebooks, and that has gone very well. So students have a Chromebook, they follow, they carry it with them all day, and they return it to their homeroom teacher at the end of the day, they do not take it home, but they are really loving that. It's a brand-new facility with collaboration areas in each grade level, and teachers are thinking of creative ways to use that, but no other school in Cabarrus County has these type of facilities that we do have. We have a great digital den where students are creating digital projects and expanding their knowledge with technology. Just a lot of fabulous things going on here at Mount Pleasant, but we are just excited that you're here tonight. If you have any questions, I'm here for you, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrar, and I like to continually tease him about he left Mount Pleasant Middle and was my children's principal some time ago, but he left Mount Pleasant Middle to come out to Mount Pleasant. I think he's found his niche here.
Northwest.
I'm sorry. Well, you left northwest to come out to Mount Pleasant. Yes, correct. Okay, board members, we have the agenda, and I would like to recommend that we have a closed session at the end of the regular agenda so that we can convene to discuss the acquisition, the possible acquisition of real property. So do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Second.
Okay, so the motion was by David and seconded by Robert. Okay, all in favor of amending the agenda? Any opposed? Okay, now we'll take a motion to adopt the agenda as presented with the modification.
Second.
So David made the motion, Barry seconded, all in favor of adopting the agenda as presented with the modification? Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, the first item, we'll invite Mr. Tim Louder to join us regarding a request to use contingency funds for unsuitable soil at West Cabarrus High School.
Good evening.
And this is an action item, is that correct?
Yes.
Are we supposed to do something?
We have a motion here. Who would that?
Thank you. I just came back from the County Commissioners Meeting where I presented the same proposal to them. At that time, what we have, we've found a considerable amount of unsuitable soil, so obviously on our new high school site. And I guess fortunately or unfortunately, we're probably the worst time of year to be moving soil. However, it's probably a blessing in disguise because obviously trying to move soil in the worst water conditions on the site is going to ensure that when it does dry out in the summer, that we're in sound condition. It'd be terrible for us to move all this dirt in the middle of the summer, and then all of a sudden the wet conditions come in with the water table rises, and we have failures. So I guess it's probably a good thing. But in doing so, we were having to mine some soil, soil from the existing portions of the site, and by mining, I mean, we are taking soil below finished grade on site. We found, with explorations, found suitable soils. We had some very granular material. We call it training school gravel. If you're from around here, that's pretty much what we call it, some very granular material. And we were to find quite a bit of that material, but it was below our finished grade. So therefore, we have to go in and mine that material out below finished grade, use it, and then backfill with unsuitable materials we do have on site. And fortunately, those mining sites, if you will, are under the sports fields in the very back of the site, which is very fortunate because then we could go back with soils that were somewhat unsuitable, allow us to somewhat relax the compaction requirements for that area, so that when those soils go in, we're just using those for athletic fields and practice fields, therefore don't need to have a structural, the same structural demands that you would have on the building itself or the parking lot. So to our advantage to be able to find that material in that location. But in doing so, at this point in time, we were able to move forward with the project, but the quantities are getting to the point where we're going to expend our total allowances within the site to do so. I feel like it's a little dangerous to expend all those allowances this early into the site, especially considering some of them are rock-related, and we know that when we move to the other portion of the site, which may have a stadium, we may have to use some of our rock allowances there. So we requested that you make this request to the county to release some of our contingency, which has already been budgeted, but just not released to us to use. And I will tell you how the county proposes to do that. We have $414,000, $414,250 that are already budgeted of that contingency in this year's budget. And they were able to, speaking of Mount Pleasant Middle School, we had capital reserves that we did not use. We only used $75,000 of our $1.2 million contingency for this school. So this school went very well, thank goodness. So therefore, they were able to take $175,000 from that contingency, $185,750, to make up our total $600,000 without having to go back to any budget amendment on their part other than just moving the money from one pocket to the other to allow us to have that available to us. And so with that, we're requesting that you, as a board, in retrospect, request the county, make a formal request of the county to release those funds to us, which they have voted to do contingent upon you folks, obviously approving it, which is kind of a little backward, but that's just the way the time worked out for the meeting today. Any questions?
Well, how much are we actually asking them to release to us?
$600,000.
$600,000. Well, the question, when we say unsuitable soil, is this rocky soil we had, is it contaminated soil? What kind of nasty soil are we talking about here?
It's a very plastic clay soil that when, if you have very dry conditions, it compacts pretty well. Immediately upon getting it wet, it just falls apart, and it will not hold its compaction. So therefore, it's very dangerous to put that type of soil under something that's structurally sound because if it does get wet and saturated, then you start having failures in the future. So therefore, it's a very, we have a very, very high water table, and as a matter of fact, part of our contingency we use to actually drain that water table because we actually have just water just within two or three feet of the surface in some places. Because of the high plastic soil we have, it just holds the water there, doesn't let it go on and drain through the substrate. It just stays on top and flows three or four feet under the surface. And so those soil conditions really cause us a lot of problems, and our geotechnical engineer says, "I cannot approve these and guarantee that they will withstand, you know, your long-term compaction needs." So therefore, you have to find some other granular material. Other options were to go off-site and actually import soil, which is a much more expensive option, but then once you do that, what are you going to do with the soil now? At least by mining on-site, we have an opportunity to backfill and use the unsuitable soils and rock in that location, whereas if we just imported it only, say we imported 50,000, 60,000, 70,000 yards, what do you do with the 70,000 yards now that is in excess soil? So, you know, so actually, it's better for us to be able to mine it on-site if we can, and it is actually cheaper to do so.
One of the other things, why was this not found when we did our borings? And if we didn't, why did we not do enough borings to find this?
Well, when you have a 100-acre site to do a boring pattern that you are, to try to cover all those areas, you have probably a 20-by-20 or 20-by-40 grid or even 50-by-50 grid, would probably cost us in excess of $150,000, $200,000. Okay? Has to find something or not find something. However, what's so odd about the soil conditions we have here, I can literally dig a trench 40 feet wide, 16 feet deep, great soil. Three feet away, I can dig 20 feet and never get good soil. So therefore, your opportunity to find those with even that elevated amount of borings is probably just not worth it upfront. Does that make sense? So in other words, you're paying for a contingency that may or may not use. I mean, that's the same thing with rock borings. You can do rock borings on-site till, you know, the cows come home, as my grandfather used to say, and you will miss rock. I mean, it's just inevitable where you will miss rock because you just can't bore that small a pattern economically. And we do, we knew we had some, you know, concerns about the soil when we moved into the site, however, we thought that, you know, given that the dry conditions, that we would be able still, you know, to mediate those, to amend those with a soil amendment and still use them, but the geotech said, "I'm sorry, it costs you more to amend them than it would be to replace them." And so therefore, we, replacement is our cheapest option.
Well, on this amount, the $600,000, I know that we did some, I don't want to say, we did some shuffling around because we had some other stuff when we first started out and saying, "Okay, we're going," when we first started trying to, because we were over-budget to start with.
Yes, sir.
And we tried to take this and shuffle this around and to try to come down with a lower budget to start with. Do we have anything else that we can give up to come up with this $600,000? I mean, we had, we had gotten an email from somebody, and they had sawed this $600,000 figure, and they said, "Hey, give up a ball field, give up something for the $600,000, and I just want the record to show, hey, do we have anything we can give up besides to give up the $600,000? Because I want the record to show." I know we had did some, given up some other stuff to try to get some stuff, but is there anything that we, I'm asking the question, is there anything that we can give up to do this?
Okay. As you recall, we went into the project having a option to upfit the third floor to expand our capacity from 1,600 to 1,850. That was an $830,000 option. The board and the County Commissioners both agreed that that was an option they would like to have. So we went into the project, and we found approximately $940,000 that we could take out of this project or reduce sometimes quality, sometimes other things that we were able to take out for value engineering. And in doing that, we were able to then fund that $830,000 to upfit. So we expended most of our flexibility within the contract to cover that cost. Obviously, if we hadn't done the upfit, the $940,000 would more than cover this cost. But that's the option you have. You say, "Well, I don't want to spend any contingency money. This has already been budgeted. I want to do away with upfitting the 250, you know, seats." That's an option. I wouldn't recommend that option, but that's an option, okay? Obviously, you could open the football or the school without athletic facilities. Again, that's an option. One of the options we discussed already on about, you know, doing away with those to fund those extra seats. An option, in my opinion, not a very good option, so therefore, it's not one that we would recommend from construction. So yes, there are other options to do that as far as, you know, removing the baseball stadiums, removing the football stadiums, but opening a high school with today's athletic activities and not having those facilities available to you would cost you more to come back and retrofit later than it would be to build them now because obviously this is a bid situation. So we do have those options, but they're probably not good options. Does that make sense?
Okay. Other board members, Mr. Harrison?
So we're asking for $600,000.
We ask them to release $600,000 of the contingency to us. We intend to be under that level. When we finalize, we don't know what that final quantity is, but we knew right now we're part of our max, most likely will be. And then we also know we have credit back for the fact that we are going below subsurface, so therefore, all the dirt that was in the original cut should come back to us as a credit to offset some of that backfill for the mining. So we're, you know, those quantities will be finally verified once all the excavation is done and our surveyors can go back and verify those differentials.
Do we need to ask the Commissioners to replenish the amount that we use, or can we continue operating on that project with the remaining balance of $1,081,000?
Yes, sir. You know, obviously, the $1,081,000, once we're out of the ground and actually starting to the building process, I think we're in pretty good shape. Those contingencies are really kind of for this situation before you get out of the ground. Once you're out of the ground, you know, unless something terribly wrong with the design flaw or something like that, you really don't see those contingencies really having to be used very much. And we've already value engineered significantly into the project to allow us to continue forward without having to bump into those contingencies at that level.
So I'm not sure if I understood, but we-
We should have enough money, $1,080,000 left.
Again, except unforeseen situations. We've got other school construction coming online in the next few years. I guess I'm trying to ask a question about the methodology of testing the soil and being ready for other situations that arise.
We know that-
Do you feel that the methodology we're using is sufficient to, short of a crystal ball, to be able to just determine the condition of the buildings, I mean, the sites and to prepare the cost estimates?
Yeah, usually, our building borings are used for two major issues. One, rock. Is it there? How much is it going to cost us to move? How much rock do we have on this site? Because that is very, very expensive to move, much more expensive than mining soil and doing that. Secondly, we want to also make sure that structurally, where we're going to put the building is going to be able to support the structure. Those are the two things that the design engineer wants to know. What's your structural stability of the soil, and how much rock do you have? And once they do that, then we take that into consideration when we design the project, knowing those two factors, designing around those known factors that we can, the best we can determine factors. So therefore, spending money beyond that, like where you have ball fields or additional cuts and that sort of thing, that's really outside of your building footprint or maybe your parking areas, is somewhat, I guess you could say it's an insurance policy, but then again, it's a very expensive insurance policy considering 75% to 80% of the time they don't really play in, come into play at all. This site here, for instance, I mean, obviously, all the additional borings in the world, we're told we had great soil, but we didn't run into really any major, in fact, probably we're sitting on probably the most stable soil we've ever sat on, and this building pad was very, very lucky. The soil three feet up was very, very plastic, but when we got down to grade, we had great soil here. Dried out very quickly and did very well. That's why we came in well under budget and had almost, you know, a million dollars of our contingency left over at the end of the job. So hopefully, you know, so it is a tough balance, but I have a tough time going in and spending, you know, $150,000, $200,000 worth of additional testing for some maybe not necessary reason. I understand when you get into a job, the conditions you find you have to deal with, and hopefully, our borings are enough that we find things that just said, "I'm sorry, this site is just totally unacceptable." That's what we're going to use them for, rather than... And we also try to build into a certain amount of allowances that allows us to hit most conditions. Unfortunately, here, just because of the volume and the scale of this project, those allowances didn't, didn't quite get us to where we wanted to be.
Can I add something, Tim? So even if you do find it, if you pay to find it, you still got to move it, you still got to dig it, you still got to do something with it. So it's still going to cost you, and so I think what Tim is saying is, you know, we don't spend that money upfront, we only spend it when we absolutely have to. And the other thing, your first point was that the county is not going to replenish our contingency fund until we deplete our contingency fund. In general, that's just working with them over the years, and so we monitor it constantly and kind of the first thing that Mike and I said was, you know, how much do we have and how much do we have left? And, you know, maybe this worries us just a little bit because we're early in, but we're watching it, and we'll come to you with a request if we feel like we're going to need more.
Yeah. The good news is our building pad is 100% complete, and it meets compaction, and it's held up very, very well even to all the rains. So from that standpoint, the building can continue to move forward because it's very critical. Obviously, the building needs to move forward because we got 18 months to opening, so we cannot slow that process down. So that's the good news. So the soil we're doing now is for the parking areas and stuff outside of that building footprint.
And is this extra work on the soil causing any kind of schedule change, or is the project going to be on schedule? Will this work cause a five, 10-day delay or shift other parts of the schedule in any way?
Well, I mean, obviously, it has impacted, you know, the beginning of the building pad, moving the soil in and for the conditions, but we are early on in the project, and we intend to be on time. I will give you the construction administration budget. We have told the contractor, being late on this project is not an option, and therefore, you've got 18 months to find ways in this schedule to make this up. But the critical path, no, to answer your question, the work they're doing now is not on the critical path. The critical path was building the building pad and start vertical erection.
Mr. Schumacher?
So you made mention that the Commissioners requested that we move $185,000 from the $1.2 million of contingency left over from Mount Pleasant, so we would actually only use $414,250 from our, of the $600,000 from our contingency, and then add the $185,000 from the-
No, sir.
No. Well, that's kind of the way it's said.
That's, yes, sir, I understand, but that's not accurate. So we were allocated $1.681 million in the budget when we developed this budget for this high school, and we're asking to access $600,000 of that. The part where the county's taking it from the middle school is just really timing on their side. They didn't have the contingency allocated in a budget yet. So if they don't have it allocated in the budget, they can't give it to us. So they just went to a source where they knew that they had the funds. So really, we have $1.6 million of contingency, we're going to use $600,000 of it, we're going to be left with $1,081. And so it, you know, it sounds good that we didn't use the contingency in Mount Pleasant, and it is good, it's wonderful. It's a good point, but kind of in the whole scheme of things, this was the budget, this is what we're using, and this is what will be remaining.
Right, so it was just a cash flow issue for the county?
Cash flow, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Powell, any questions?
So you're digging a borrow pit basically from the athletic fields, and will it impact the ability to come back later and maybe build a field house or some sort of structure near the athletic fields that we're putting this borrow pit? Now we're filling it up with gumbo clay. That is a little bit of a concern, I guess, because I don't think we're building a field house to start with. Maybe we are, I can't remember, but if they want to come back and do something like that, would it be a concern there?
Fortunately for us, these are in the practice fields in the very back, they didn't have any structures associated with them, they're beyond the parking lot, so therefore, we're very fortunate when we found the material. It just happened to be good luck, I guess, on our part. But no, it does not. Our field houses are in a totally different location adjacent to the football fields themselves and the baseball fields themselves, which are on the other portions of the site. The areas we're mining are actually the large grass practice fields at the end of the parking lot adjacent to the subdivision abutment to the north of us, so therefore, it would not impact any future structures, I don't think, at all. And we are building a field house as part of this project. It does have it in the bid for the field house at the football field.
Dr. Kurt?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
And we're asking for this to be an action item, and that is why? Because of the dollar amount or the timing, or what?
It's the timing. Obviously, the contractor needs to be, we need to give him some assurance that we're going to pay him for continuing to mine this material, and if he doesn't, then he needs to probably stop because he's into it, you know, to almost the maximum amount that we have available to him within our allowances, and we go beyond that, we say, "Sorry, you got to stop because I can't guarantee your payment without having this in place."
Okay.
One more question. So if we don't approve this tonight, then the Commissioners cannot approve it at their meeting?
The Commissioners went ahead and suspended their rules and approved it tonight.
Oh, they have already-
Contingent upon you folks.
Contingent upon us, okay. I just want to make sure we understood that. Thank you.
The Commissioners' meeting started at 4:00, so we didn't know how the timing was going to work, if they were possibly still in session by the time we got to this, but it sounds like they made the motion contingent upon our motion.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Furtinbaugh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request from Cabarrus County Commissioners for the use of contingency funds in the amount of $600,000 for the unsuitable soils at West Cabarrus High School.
Second.
Okay. Barry made the motion, David seconded. And before we take the final vote, I just wanted to comment to thank the Commissioners for working with us and for Kelly and Tim to get all the information together so it could be taken to them, and I'm glad to hear that some of the money can be taken out of the previous fund and to acknowledge that we did not use all the contingency previously because sometimes I think the information that gets out to the community is that we just spend, 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 but we really did not spend all of the money on another project. So it's fortunate that the county still had that in their budget, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Board members, all those in favor of the motion, I'm just going to read the whole thing, that the Board approved requesting from the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners the use of contingency funds in the amount of $600,000 for unsuitable soil at West Cabarrus High School. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes 7-0.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, and you'll let Kelly or Tim, you'll let the county know?
Yes, ma'am.
We just approved it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to reports, and the first one we have is in Board Docs because I wouldn't have, I guess, a projection here, but our Teacher of the Year, Teacher Lea Zonpage Norris is going to do a presentation on her participation at the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, or NCCAT, conference.
All right, thank you. In mid-January, I was very fortunate to be able to attend a Leadership Academy at NCAT in Ocracoke. The program title was "Developing Teacher Leaders in and Out of the Classroom," and I just wanted to briefly share some of those events of that week with you. We started the very first night we arrived, so early Tuesday morning, my colleague Mary Price and I left really early. We drove five hours, then we rode a ferry for three hours, arrived on Ocracoke, checked in, and immediately went to work. There were 22 educators from across the state, two presenters. After we introduced ourselves, we got right down to business, broke into small groups, and there are a couple pictures of our small groups there. We just talked about how teachers can demonstrate leadership in our classrooms, in our schools, and in our communities, and we explored some leadership traits and discussed how we can build on our strengths and learn from our challenges. And then we broke into teams, and we explored ways that we can demonstrate leadership by advocating for positive change to improve education. And we took those findings and we built on those to begin making our own personal leadership plan of action. So that was the very first night. Early the next morning, we got started again. On day two, we started talking about the five levels of leadership as defined by John Maxwell, and we looked at how leaders develop and progress through his five levels of position, permission, production, people, and personhood. And we took those levels, and we discussed where our own leadership is currently and how we plan to progress to the next level. Then we looked closely at various teacher leadership standards and their relevance to teacher leadership roles. They taught us about an analysis tool called SWOT, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and we reviewed the factors that might influence our leadership, and we looked at case studies that involve leadership. And then that evening, we rolled into discussing the professional learning community, including its definition, history, components, and relevance. And we took a closer look at mentoring and peer influence and how that improves school culture and develops leaders in schools. On day three, which was Thursday, we woke up, and the school was closed here, but we woke up to seven and a half inches of snow on the island, which was, which is rare for Ocracoke. rare for Ocracoke. So, they were a little lost, but we enjoyed it. We took pictures. We played in the snow, and then, we got back to work. We looked at a lot of PLC resources that establish and improve PLCs. And then, as teams, we presented those resources to the whole group. The instructors encouraged us to use that SWOT analysis to look at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to implementing PLCs school-wide. And I have to say that as I talked with other teachers from across the state, I felt really comfortable discussing the PLC process because I was here when we implemented that. And Cabarrus County's done a great job at educating and preparing our teachers to hold PLC leadership roles. So, it felt great to be able to answer the questions of other teachers. Some of them aren't doing PLCs in their schools. They don't, they didn't even know what it was. So, I felt really prepared. We moved into the afternoon, and we stepped out of our comfort zone. And the instructors gave us a task of know your why. And so, we really had to examine what our purpose was, why we do what we do every day. So, we brainstormed together, had some really valuable discussions, and helped each other talk through exactly why we do what we do every day. And we reflected on the past two days and finalized our leadership action plans. And I honestly can say this was one of the most empowering professional developments I've ever attended. I left ready to just come home and do great things. I did want to share a couple of the snow, or a few of the snow pictures with you because it was beautiful. So, you can see there, snow on the island. The drifts were a couple feet high. The ferry didn't run at all on Thursday. The wind was too high. So, that's those pictures. And then, the very last picture is our group shot. They said it was the first one they can remember that was taken in the snow. So, that's there in front of the building. And it was just a really great experience. We came together Tuesday as strangers, and I developed friendships from across the state over the next couple of days. And it was an honor to receive this scholarship and to have had this experience at NCAT. And thank you for letting me share it with you.
Well, thank you for sharing, Paige. And I personally, even though I don't like the big group touchy-feely activities, I do like when it becomes a personal reflection. You know, when you think about, why am I really doing what I'm doing? Or do I just wake up on Monday and go to work every morning because it's what I always do? So, I think that's sometimes liberating to actually think about that.
So, let me go up there or be here?
You can be here. Okay. Yeah. Next, we'll have Mrs. Carpenter is going to share with us about the garden projects and in particular, I guess, what's going on at AT Allen.
Well, thank you. AT Allen Elementary has applied to participate in the Real Gardens, Real School Gardens Program. This program levels outdoor classrooms to improve teachers' effectiveness, students' achievement, and well-being of the entire community. The program features the opportunities to collaborate, design, and build an outdoor classroom space, and incorporate training for teachers in the area of math, science, and project-based learning. The support from the district includes professional development funds, which will be available in the budget with no need for expansion, which that's good. That means no money on our part, which I know y'all enjoy that. The entire school team is extremely excited about continuing to build teachers' learning and school community around gardening, which has already been a focus at AT Allen for the last few years. Once AT Allen receives the grant, we will provide a full report to the board. Now, I don't know if y'all remember. Some of you may not. But last year, I came before you with Edna Cherico from the Real School Gardens. And we asked you, because we were going to Raleigh to try to get grants, and there was five counties that were involved with that. We were looking at Macklinburg, Union, us, Gaston. And we were trying to get funds from Raleigh to try to do one of our schools. Because with the Real Gardens, they look at a school that is, you know, what am I trying to think of? Crystal, help me. Title I. They have to be a Title I school to participate. And unfortunately, they, we didn't get the, you know, funds from Raleigh last year. But Crystal was very helpful, and we went out to AT Allen. And I hope that all of y'all will go to AT Allen. AT Allen has really done a wonderful job. So, if you get a chance, please go out and see their garden because they have done a great job. They're really a step above everyone else. They're doing a great job. Ms. Nash and them and the teachers are doing a wonderful job already. So, they've got a head start. And what they're going to do, they've applied for the grant. And what they will do, Edna will also go out and get some of the local business, try to get some additional funds from some of the local businesses and try to get them involved also. But we are also going to go back to Raleigh and going to try to possibly get some funding from them again. Now, Macklinburg will not be included. It'll probably be us and probably four other counties. But it won't, Macklinburg will not be included this time. But we are going to be meeting with some of our local legislators, and we're going to try again for those funds also. But I think they stand a real good chance in getting that grant, and they're really excited about it. And so, it'll be a great, great opportunity. And so, I think that, Crystal, you're going to probably, if it's okay with this board, to do us a letter to send with the grant in support of that. And if it's okay with the board, if y'all agree for Crystal to do a letter of support, I think it's a great, great opportunity. And they are doing a, you know, great job, and I think it'll be a great opportunity. And with the letter, we're not saying we're going to give any kind of funds or anything like that. We're just saying we support the concept. And it is a great opportunity. And I've seen a lot of the videos, and I think me and Crystal had gone to a presentation last year. And what we've seen, it is great for the students. They showed us some great examples of where they, after the gardens had been put in, they show great advancement and great growth in EOGs. It teaches the children examples of how they improved their math skills and community involvement. It gets the parents involved, and the children just really get excited about it. And it's just a really, really good experience. So, thank you so much for letting me share this information with you this evening.
Is there an opportunity to bring on additional schools in the future?
Well, they can all apply. You can have more than one in the system. The main thing that they have to do, they do have to be Title I. That is one of the requirements. And they can, you can have more than the one in there. But the Title I is one of the requirements. Like I mentioned earlier, AT Allen was just, you know, just for, when I talked earlier with Crystal, I was thinking about Wolf Meadow because they were year-round. And I thought that would be a good opportunity for them. But I know they were going through a lot then because it was only their first or second, well, it was their second years for, you know, year-round. And so, they were going through a lot, but that might be a possibility. They had the space. One of the things, the gardens, it does take a lot of space. So, you would have to make sure that they had the space for the gardens to happen. But I know Bethel, they've got space. But that, you know, that is one of the things that had to be considered. And, but I know that we have got the, a lot of the farm, what was the, Crystal, what was the name of that farm that we were talking about?
Lomax.
Lomax Farms. But trying to get some of our businesses like that to be involved is really a good cooperation between some of our local businesses. And I know out in this area, they've got a lot of agriculture. And this is, this is very important. And that would be a great partnership between businesses and things like that if we could get that going. So, yeah, we can have more than one, and they could apply. And I know that Mr. Cherico would be more than happy to, if any of the other schools would be interested in doing that, to do an application. They usually have a certain deadline. Is that not correct, that they have to have those applications in by?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. And one of the things that we looked at is because they have to be Title I, all of our other Title I schools already have a focus. And AT Allen was the only Title I school that did not have a focus. So, Ms. Nash expressed interest in having something. She threw a couple of things around, STEM, maybe STEAM. And then, I remembered the opportunity that I had to go with Ms. Carpenter last year after we went on a tour and talked. And I said, "What about this Real School Gardens? Is that something you'd be interested in?" So, we met, and it was like Match.com. It was just a great, great connection, so...
That's great.
And the goats were great. I wanted to tell, I love the goats out there. Please, guys, if you get a chance, the goats were wonderful. I wanted to tell our maintenance, they are doing a great job out there at the pond out there. They're doing their job. But they were so cute. But their garden is wonderful. And, and too, I got my exercise in because the garden is kind of, it's not right close to the school. So, I got my exercise in. I got to see the goats. So, it was a wonderful, wonderful day. And then, they took me back to the classroom, saw a lot of the projects that the children were doing with, that they had been performing and everything. So, it was, it was a great, great experience. So, if any of you do have free time, please go out there and see all the wonderful things that they are doing because it was just a great, great day. I enjoyed it so much. So, take the time to go out there and see all the wonderful things they're doing at AT Allen. I'll put a plug in there. That's the commercial for AT Allen this evening. So, they did a wonderful, wonderful job.
Board members, any comments?
Just noticed there are plenty of pictures on their website if you're interested in seeing that.
Oh, they've got it on the website. But they do, they do a great job. And like I said, they're hoping to get that big dig. And when they do the big dig, that is a big celebration they do if they get the, they do a lot of, the Real School does a lot of PR for that. They really make a big celebration out of it. And so, they'll be doing a lot of PR with that and everything with the big dig, as they call it, the big dig. So, we can all go out and celebrate for that. So, keep your fingers crossed.
Well, thank you for sharing.
Madam Chair, I have one comment.
Yes.
In addition to what Ms. Carpenter offered up, the Master Gardeners of Cabarrus County offer scholarships for schools every year. But last year, none of our schools actually applied. So, it is an untapped resource in our community that also want to support gardening and want kids to have that enriched experience. The Master Gardeners of Cabarrus County. So, thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Thank you.
Well, that, where they get some plants to go in those gardens.
Okay. We'll move on to Agenda Item 5.01, the Budget Amendments. Ms. Clutch?
Thank you. This evening, I have four budget amendments before you. I will start with state. You can see the First Amendment, which is a large sum, is our mid-year transportation adjustment. That's the normal adjustment that we expect every year this, this time of year. And then, the other couple that are significant in dollars, you'll see the third-grade bonus allocation and the fourth and fifth grade reading allocation, the fourth and, fourth to eighth grade math, and the AP, IB, and CTE bonuses. And I just jotted down some numbers for your, for your information. So, we had 20 teachers receive the third-grade bonus. We had 223 that received the other allotment. So, whether it was fourth and fifth, fourth to eighth, AP, IB, or CTE. So, in total, we had 243 teachers receive a bonus. That's very good. Any questions on state before I move on?
Ms. Clutch, when will those bonuses actually be issued to the...
They were already issued in their January 31 paychecks.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. We'll move on to local. The budget amendment here, as you'll recall, last month, the board approved a redistricting contract, and we had to do a budget amendment to move those funds. And you'll see that reflected here. Okay. The next one is our federal budget amendment. You can see just a good number of reclasses mainly due to indirect cost and small dollar amounts. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address those. Okay. And finally, the last in our local special fund, we received a grant or funding from Harper Corporation for the Rod Challenge Grant. And so, that's at Northwest High. And my understanding is they're building a car, which is pretty cool.
A whole car?
A rod, rad car. Rad car? Rat car?
Okay.
Hot rod. It's a hot rod. It's a hot rod.
Hot rod, okay.
Do you have any questions?
Board, are you okay with consent agenda?
No.
Not on number two?
Budget amendment number two.
In which item?
As I said last week, I don't think that's the proper use of funds. I'm opposed to the budget amendment number two.
Okay. So, we'll put the budget amendments on action agenda? Any other questions or comments, board members?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have the policies for approval on first reading. Ms. Reimer and Ms. Burns?
Good evening. So, we have four policies this week up for first read. Policy 2310 is an optional policy, public participation at board meetings. It adds specific procedures for public comment, including adding time limits for speakers and the comment period itself. Policy 2400 is a strongly recommended change. It adds a new provision regarding the applicability of board policies. It is intended to allow restart schools in the LEA to operate free of the policy requirements that reflect statutory and state board of education requirements from which restart schools are exempt. Policy 3460 is graduation requirements. This is a required change. We have these every year. Policy 7410 is teacher contracts. These are recommended changes, and that policy was extensively changed, as Ms. Jones has spoke to. The next policies only have minor changes to them, such as Policy 1510, 427270 adds visitors to subsection D4. It's a strongly recommended change. 1800 updates the title and the number of a policy in the text. It's required if the board adopts the changes to policy 6430 and 6440. Policy 3000 updates terminology in the text to be consistent with the new statutory language. Policy 3220 makes minor edits to the text in the first paragraph in section D. Policy 4600 revises the last sentence to improve readability. Policy 3321 removes the word ordinarily from the second paragraph for clarity. Policy 6340 updates the title of the policy 6430 and deletes reference to policy 6440 in the text. Policy 6520 updates the policy title and cross-references.
Okay. So, we need to take these one at a time. So, I just want clarification. On 7410, it says revision, but that was really a new policy? The teacher contracts?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't want to go into details right now. I just want to clarify on the chart. So, we'll go down in order. On the chart that is in the agenda, it says revision, but that's a new policy?
Well, it's not really a new policy. It's just the content of how contracts are issued now is new. So, it wasn't a strike-through policy because what the School Board Association did was give multiple options in the policy that were never in there before. So, it wasn't just a clear strike-through policy.
So, is there anything from a prior policy that's in there?
So, basically, what they, yes, there is. It just says, because the revisions were so extensive, the policy is difficult to read in strike-out format. So, they basically kind of, it is the same policy, but there's so many changes that they've kind of written.
Because that was confusing. It said revision, and there was no red line to it. Okay. Let's start with 2310, the public participation at board meetings. I know David had some comments. I had some comments.
I have, one of the things, there was quite a bit of discussion in there. And one thing to note, this is an optional policy. And I know we did a lot of discussion in our policy. We had worked on that thing for quite a while, and I think we had it, our, we had it pretty well, worked out very well. And I don't think, I'm just going to make my statement. I don't think we need to do anything to the policy we have in place now. And since it's an optional policy, I think we already just forget what they said we needed to do. That's my statement.
Okay, are there any significant parts that we need to retain?
At the bottom of section B, it talks about eliminating public comment time for a month that we only have one meeting. Or, I'm sorry, if, for, when we don't have a regular meeting, it says. That's, I don't like adding that in there because if we only have a work session meeting and that's by design, I think that there should be a public comment section. I don't think that there should be a month where we have a scheduled meeting where there's not a public comment section.
I had suggested that the wording be changed on that one to say the board may not, not will not. So depending on what else is going on.
I don't like that either because in the past, the administration has, has brought things to the board in such a, in such a fashion that they can get approved without public comment. I don't like that as an option. I'd rather just eliminate it so that there, the public knows that there is a, a public comment section if we have a regular meeting during that month.
Aren't we required to have a business meeting each month?
And I think that's what we normally do. We just have one meeting, but we don't have the recognition at the business meeting.
Recognition is one thing, but public comment, like Vince was talking, is something else.
Yeah. What was the discussion behind making that statement? Was it just an option?
It was just an option.
It's just an option. So we don't have to do an option. If we don't want to do an option, we don't have to do an option.
Is there anything in here that legally needs to change or we're trying to repair a flaw in the policy?
No, if it's a. If it's optional, we just don't have to do it. They just, you know, because our board, we had already done a lot of stuff that this other people maybe hadn't done. You know, our policies, we're normally ahead of everybody else anyway. And I think we were pretty much ahead of everybody else.
Okay, board, should we just abandon these changes? Is it, I'm sure you spent, we got, spent a lot of time on discussion, but.
We, we did in policy, but I would defer to our attorney and it's definitely a board, board decision here, so.
These are board preference items. And so it's just discussion. What might make, what might make the, the meetings run more smoothly? But the meeting should be run as the board wants to have them run. And so whatever the board feels proper.
I do think there is already a statement regarding generally personnel confidential will be handled according with the grievance policy and so on. I think this policy, even without any changes, could be referred to if a public speaker would get too far down the path of a personnel issue. So I think we could keep the number handy, if you will, and refer to that based on, you know, this policy. We need to ask you to follow the proper process for direct personnel complaints. So board, what's your pleasure? Do we abandon the changes and just take this off the agenda? Any changes that anybody feels are needed?
I'll second that.
Well, there should be a motion first.
I'll make a motion that we just.
I don't think we need a motion to take it off. We just don't approve it. We exclude the approval. So is there a preference to exclude it, Mr. Schumaker?
I make them.
We don't have to do a motion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we just will take it off.
Are you just talking about removing this particular policy?
Just this particular one right now, 2310.
So we can have some more time to comment on it? Or are you talking about just removing it?
Well, there seems to be some interest in just removing it. Remove the changes.
Oh, remove the changes.
Not remove the policy. Just remove this off the agenda for changes.
We're reverting back to the previous version.
Correct. Maintain the previous version.
Well, actually, I liked some of the items in section B and the public comment, but that was, that was the only one. I mean, I like that piece where comments wouldn't exceed maybe 30 minutes to 40 minutes because we, you know, we haven't had that many public comments to begin with. But usually when we have a real public comment, we usually have it scheduled. When we have issues like redistrictings and that type of thing, we usually open that. Those are public hearings and that's where.
And everyone may speak who chooses.
Right. But I did agree with the strikeout where the chairperson will decide the time to vote or that didn't need to be in there. I felt that was somewhat redundant.
Yeah, the one thing I do like is that in the middle, the substitute speakers will not be permitted and speakers may not donate any portion of their time. Because we've had that sometimes where people were coming up twice and saying, well, I'm going to give the rest of my time and then speaker one comes back up. And so this is really intended to, if you will, spread the love. Everyone who wants to speak can speak and not kind of create a form for one individual perspective.
Well, and section B also gives the board some flexibility to, if they, even if they want, you know, right now it says 30 minutes, but at the bottom part, it does as if an unusually large number can speak. You could reduce the time, but there also is not opposed to the board making a recommendation to extend the time. So I mean, the board's got options. If they're weighing in to do anything, then they can make the rules up at that point that they want to do. And so I feel like it's a slight of flexibility.
The only problem we found with that, you would have to have somebody out front when people were signing up to say, you know, if we were putting that 30-minute time limit on, to let people know that, oh, we're going to cut off at 30 minutes and warn somebody, you may be cut off or you're not going to be, you know, we would have to have somebody out front to warn them that they may not get to talk or we were going to cut off at that time. And so it may be a real clerical, a, a problem with that if we put that time, type of time limit on there that way. And so that was what we talked about, that we may have some problem with that if we put some type of, have to have somebody out there to say, you know, if we do put some type of limit on there, we would have to let those persons know that there was possibility that they could be limited on time or that they were right there on the time limit when it might be cut off.
Okay, what I'd like to, I guess, do is, maybe we just keep it on the table for a few more minutes and then decide. So I had sent in several comments. One thing is on A, paragraph A, this has in here that someone may request an audit for the agenda by 8:00 a.m. at least four days prior to the meeting. Typically, we're setting the agenda at five business days before the meeting. And so I would like, if we're going to change this policy, I would like to have that changed to five. And it can even say noon on that day because we don't do it until late in the day. But if we set the agenda and then we get a request overnight, then we're getting everybody on the phone or having another meeting. So we'd like to try to keep that organized. So just a thought on that to add the five. And then at the beginning of letter B, it says the first part of each meeting. I would like to really, if we're going to make any changes, I want to keep that as a part of each business meeting because first can imply numerically to people in exact order. We do not do the public speakers first. We have recognitions. We have the presentation of colors. We're not doing it first. And so I think it just needs to say a part. I don't care for the, will not exceed 30 minutes. I don't want to have to go through a bunch of order and motions and everything if it's going to be 33 minutes. So I don't care for that. But Rob, you have some comments?
Now, I guess my question was, what are other school districts our size doing with, with this type of a policy? Do they have a limit? We don't know.
Our attorney may be able to speak to that as he's probably a little more familiar.
I don't know about school systems that are larger. The ones that we deal with typically have three to five people speak. It's not an issue. 30 minutes does seem somewhat short based on what some other places might have. But I think the concept was to have some sort of line rather than three hours. And if 30 is too short, if you wanted to have a limit, maybe it could go up to 60 or something. But certainly the, the large school systems that we have been involved with do try to have them so the public comments don't take all night. And it's, it's just individual school boards. I've even had school boards, the public comment at the end, if you can imagine, so that people have to sit and wait, wait for it, you know, which to me is not very, not very responsive to the public, but it lets the, get the business done and then those who want to speak can speak afterwards. So it's board preference.
Okay, so I'm hearing a couple of things. Vince's comment about take out that whole section at the end of B. Is that correct, Mr. Powell?
I have other comments, but yep.
Okay. Those couple changes I suggested, what other comments, Mr. Powell?
I don't think there should be a limit, a 30-minute limit. I think that if we have enough speakers that want to speak to us for longer than 30 minutes, they should have that right. I don't think that someone should be able to come to the meeting expecting to speak and just because others have signed up ahead of them, they don't get to speak. And so, you know, given the fact that we've only really exceeded 30 minutes one time that I'm aware of, I think it's, I think it's a layer of accountability that we need to keep in there so that the public feels like if they want to come and talk with us, they can come. And if they come, they will be able to speak to us. I think it's important to get rid of that limit altogether.
Mr. Harrison, anything else?
Not the other member, no.
Okay. So board members, are you okay with taking out the time limit? Okay. Are you okay with removing the additional statement that says if we do not hold a meeting, we will not have a public comment period? Can you move that statement? And then my request about taking out the first part, just to leave it as a part. And then the other question I had was about the sign-up period because I believe that speaker requests do come to Ms. Monroe, our board clerk. They don't? Okay, so.
We're not certain if they were changed in 2014.
Okay. So your, everything is on that night before the meeting? Okay, then that's fine. I, I was thinking that you were still adding people, that, but that was the public hearing you were taking ahead of time. Okay, very good.
It has been replaced by a card that will allow us to talk.
Okay. So Ms. Reimer, Burns, can you make those adjustments and bring it back? And this one will have to be on action then. Okay, so 2400 board policies. I think that one's pretty straightforward and clear. We okay with consent on 2400? Okay, 3460, I think was pretty clear as well. Just some little clarifications. We okay on consent? Okay. Teacher contracts. 7410.
Could use more time to review it soon.
Anyone else, anyone have questions? Just review time?
We had quite a bit of discussion on that when it was explained to us quite a bit.
Okay, I'm okay with it. I just was confused on why nothing was redlined. I couldn't figure out what were the changes. Okay, so we will do action for 7410. I really encourage you all to try to find time. I know I, I was late on reading mine. I didn't read till Sunday morning, but fortunately staff was gracious and was answering my questions. Okay. The 1510, 427270, school safety.
Yeah, all of these are just minor little edits, so they're not even changed.
I think there were a couple though that had, did they have little tweaks?
Yeah, the minor.
The technology and the education program. I know I had asked if that wording, is Dr. Probst?
She is.
Or, I couldn't see you. Oh, you're down there. I just thought it, it sounded a little antiquated to me that we intend to do digital learning.
I haven't discussed it with Dr. Hill, but I certainly agree with you that we should change that from intent to currently are practicing and work with the attorney on the, on proper language on that. It was a good suggestion.
He just sounded old to me.
It was.
Okay, so 3220 then we'll put on action just because it will be a slightly different wording change, but the intention will still be there. So governing principle, consent, goals and objectives of the education program consent, 3000. 3220 on action, student fees, 4600.
Can somebody explain, it says, we've added designate to several points to here. How do we determine who that designate is?
I think that's just, that's normal on probably policies that we missed in.
Well, in this case, I'm just trying to understand that.
I think that's Dr. Lotters choice and probably a lot of it is Ms. Reimer.
Depends on the area.
Yeah.
Is it the principal or is it not? Who, who would that be?
It's the stupid T's.
But each principal is required to submit any list of fees to the principal?
4600.
So it doesn't, that doesn't make sense, so.
Yeah, I think it's whoever would be gathering the fees for the district that may be in Dr. Hill's department.
Yeah, sometimes it's banned because a lot of them are high school, so it kind of depends on what area it costs.
So then it should be multiple designees with an S, right?
Yes, designate probably for each area. I don't think we've ever done the plural designate. It's designate for whatever the topic is.
And just as, I just wanted to add something. Just as a reminder, every year we bring fees to the board for approval.
Right.
And again, that comes from various different sources.
Okay, can we put 4600 on consent? 6321, bus routes, consent. 6340, transportation service vehicle contracts, consent. 6520, use of equipment, materials, and supplies, consent. Okay. Okay, so for action, I have 2310, 7410, and 3220. All other will be consent. Is that what you all understand as well? Then move on to item 5.03, policies for approval on the second reading. I've been concerned about 2670, so I'd like to have that on action, thinking that we may need, if we're permitted, soften the language a little bit because the Cabarrus County Leadership Class started this. We've kind of put the cart before the horse in the, what it requires us to do as a board. It's already been decided. So we're not gathering names and nominating people and so on. It has already transpired through that Cabarrus Leadership Class. Is that correct?
Not exactly. So because our CTE department already has a strong relationship with business people in the community, again, the Cabarrus Leadership Project came to us and said, we know that this is coming, let's help you put some things in place. So the, I think the thing that might be the sticking point is the section A in terms of the members on the committee. So our department provided a list of suggested advisory council members, again, simply because those are folks that our CTE department already has a really strong relationship with, that we work with. They already volunteer their time and their services. So that was a list that we submitted to the board. I don't want to say as a courtesy, but just as, this is what we are, what we're already doing. But definitely if the board wants to select and use whatever selection process that you all choose for members of this advisory council, we are more than happy and willing to work with whomever you all deem as appropriate. deem as appropriate to be on that council.
And the part I called to your attention earlier today is actually Section B, number two, B, appointment process?
Yes.
And it says, "Any individual interested in serving on the council should contact the Career and Technical Education Program Director and submit a statement of interest." That's what I was referring to.
Sure, and it's my, and perhaps in what get Mr. Shaw to respond. I guess my, perhaps I'm not understanding this. So the way that I read this is, it's B1, that there's an initial appointment, and then after that initial appointment, there's two subsequent appointments. So when it speaks to the letter of interest, the way I interpreted that, and I believe the way the Policy Committee interpreted that, is that letter of interest comes after the board has made that initial appointment. So after those folks start rolling off, when it talks about the terms, then in order to determine who will fill those seats, that's where that letter of interest comes into play. That was my understanding, and as well as the understanding of the people on the Policy Committee.
So, the initial list was made, because we weren't involved with that. The list was made, and my understanding is Kannapolis Board has already approved it?
That's my understanding.
But, like, so we didn't even know about it until...
They had already proved it the night when we had the first reading on this policy. So we didn't even know about it.
Right. So what I'm, again, what I'm saying is, we don't have to use those people. That was just us trying to help.
But it's one combined list?
We were, we were just trying to help and say, you, the board's going to have the task of having to come up with all these business people that we as staff have to work with. Here's a list that we already work with that kind of fills this if you want to use it. There's, you don't have to, we, the board can decide, no, we don't like that list, and select another list of people in any way that you all choose, and we'll be happy to work with those people. But that's the only reason why we submitted that list, because we already had a group of people that we work with on a regular basis.
So was this a model policy, or was it locally drafted?
It's a new policy, but I think Dr. Lauter and Dr. Hill both can speak to that. That Leadership Cabarrus played a big role in this policy actually happening.
Yeah, that's what we understand. They kind of got on that early, and Leadership Cabarrus always has a project. They took that as their project, connect the two, and so worked with Kannapolis and Cabarrus County and, and came out with that plan. So, I think the, my understanding is Kannapolis Board saw it for the first time, the same time you guys did. They just went ahead and approved it and said, "All the work's done." And then I think we had some questions, so.
Okay, so it sounds like at next week, at the, our business meeting, we need to approve the list as well?
The statute does say that the Board of Education must approve the initial slate. That's right. And it's a little bit unusual here, because you have Kannapolis and Cabarrus as well. And my understanding of this was that you already had a process that was underway. And when we looked at what Lady Shepherd Cabarrus was doing, it was very closely aligned with the statute, just a few very modest tweaks to put it in alignment with the statute. But it is required that the board approve the slate. So if you want a different slate, you can do that. We just have to work through the, the details of how that works with Kannapolis.
Okay, so if any board members want to recommend?
First, I would like to ask some questions. Is this not Cabarrus County's Business Advisory Committee?
Yes, sir.
Cabarrus County Schools Advisory Committee, which is different from Kannapolis City Schools Advisory Committee?
Yes, sir.
So actually, the people don't have to be the same.
They do not. But what happens is, we collaborate, and when you have Mr. Adams, who's at Kannapolis, who's, which is in Cabarrus County, and Rusty Parker in Cabarrus County Schools, and they're going after different businesses for partnerships, like Corning, because it's in Cabarrus County, or NASCAR, or, because it's in Cabarrus County, or all these different businesses, what happens is you end up bumping heads. So Darrell will go out and say, "Hi, we'd like to partner with you and get some internships." And then 10 minutes later, Rusty comes and they're saying, "Y'all are in the same county. Why don't you just work together, and you can come together and say, 'We would like for you to help us with X, Y, Z,' and it's a concerted effort, instead of two people that live in the same county, even though we're in two different jurisdictions in the same county bumping heads with each other." So if you come to any of our CTE events, a lot of the things that we do, we do just combined, because there is such crossover. There's businesses that are in Kannapolis, there's businesses that are in Concord, and all the areas around in Cabarrus County. So that was the reason why they, they did that effort together. But again, we do not have to do that. We can do whatever the board pleases.
Well, then that feeds into the next question is, you know, we had four seats on this advisory committee, but the way you're, you communicated it is that it's a collaborative advisory committee between two different school districts. So we have four, and then we have five seats. How many do they have as far as Kannapolis? Because, you know, because we're collaborating, your, the policy says that we're going to supply four people from Dr. Lauter's organization, and then we're going to find five more, because it's a total of nine on this committee, on this advisory council.
Yeah, the list is much larger than that, though.
Okay, well, that's, see, we're, we're a little in the dark, because we're only seeing a part of, part of the picture. So the advisory council must be much larger than the nine stated in this.
The list, the list that we submitted to you is the exact same list that Kannap, we sent to Kannapolis. The two directors worked on it together, and both sent it to the appropriate boards.
The policy originally called for nine members, because that's what the legislation required, nine members.
At least nine members, I think.
But it could be more. It could be more, and so the policy was revised to allow more, just to be consistent with what had already been in, in process. The board doesn't have to follow that process, but that was, people seem to think that that was, at least administrative level, that was something to build on, to follow that.
Wasn't there like 25 members on that board or something?
Yeah, I think we saw it at a work session, or maybe, yeah, it was before the...
If it was January 6th, then I wasn't here, and that's...
Okay, maybe that was it.
It was a retreat.
Okay. So I, Dr. Hill actually sent it to me again today, so I'll send it out, so everybody can see it. And I guess if there's any suggestions for more or different business representation, or academic representation, you all can look at it, and I'll just put in there to get back to me by a certain day.
I think that will help, because this thing talks about nine people. So it's, it's different than what the policy's...
Well, it says, it says at least nine.
At least nine.
And then if you read further, it specifies who has to be on it. So you have to have the superintendent or designee, which is me, the CTE director, the president of a local community college, and a principal. So that's already four out of the nine. Now you don't have very much business. It's more of the same, right? So you have five business people and four school people. Let's get some business-minded people around us to help us, since it's a business advisory, so that we would have adequate representation.
Oh, I fully understand that. It's just now hearing a much larger number, and I hadn't seen the list, and I, so I'm trying to mesh this in with the collaboration with Kannapolis, and, you know, so you get a black and white policy, and then you get this gray of what we're really trying to do.
And there's a real problem if, as Dr. Hill mentioned, you take up four, then Kannapolis has a similar four. Their superintendent, their CTE director, principal, so who's left from the business? Community. And so if it's going to be a collaboration effort, then it has to be a much larger committee to get sufficient business representation.
So we'll put this on action. Should there be a statement in the policy that we're collaborating with Kannapolis?
I don't think that needs to be in the policy.
Well, if that's what we're doing.
Yeah, that's more of a, yeah, administrative-type procedure. It's not a policy, if you will. The state doesn't mandate that we have to collaborate with another district.
No, it doesn't, but, you know, whatever, we can. It's our policy, so.
Madam Chair, let's, let's get this thing off the ground. Let's start working with the businesses. And in a few months, or on some cycle, let's reassess and negotiate with Cabarrus?
Yeah, but the board only names the first slate. We don't have any authorization after that.
Okay. Well, I'm sure they'll be happy to give us reports going forward, though.
Yeah, which is interesting, that we're supposed to name the first slate, but then, yeah, we don't have anything to do with it. If it's not working, or we're concerned about it.
But then never...
The policy doesn't provide for that.
And, but then never modify potus policy ever again?
Yeah.
I mean, this policy has become...
The problem is, is the way that the legislation is drafted, the statutes require the certain representation the board selects, and then the statute says that further representatives will be selected in the following matter. As you say, what if that doesn't work? And, but that's the, that's the general symbol.
Well, it's a, it's a great opportunity to formalize our relationships with the business community. And it's, it's only going to be a win-win for both school systems.
I'm curious about, I'm, I'm curious for the metrics. How do we know if it's successful or not?
Yeah.
Who are they accountable to? Congress? I mean, I just, you know, it's just as specious and vague as a creation. So I'm a little jaundiced by this, but other than that, it's a great idea.
And I think that's overall what I'm a little concerned with about, is that there's not enough detail or structure. And I worry about committees forming without an explicit detailed mission, and that is just like, let's come up with ideas.
But it says, you know, I mean, it says, "The council should report back to the board annually," when? I don't know when that's going to be, but...
Yeah.
"...on recommendations for the school systems, career, and technical education, instruction, activities, and services." I mean, that's what their task to do. That's pretty...
Yeah, except they don't have any funding responsibility or logistics responsibility.
They don't have to. I mean, they're just telling you what the needs are out in the community.
Action agenda's good, ma'am.
Yeah, I worry about the whole picture involved with forming committees, so. And I appreciate volunteers' time. I just want to make sure it's well-understood what the role is, and in some cases, what it is not, so. Anyway, so on the second reading, is everything else okay for consent? Okay, so everything else will be consent on second reading, except for 2670.
Did we get any comments from anybody on any of these?
None.
And we did reach out to our teachers and stuff.
Just a moment. Robert, are you finished?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
Come in. Mr. Shaw?
There are three policies, I think, that need slight legal adjustments in their legal references. There's no other change.
In addition to what's here on first reading?
This is on the second reading policy.
Our second reading?
You're, you're dealing with all the policies right now. Is that right? Or are you just dealing with, you're not dealing with just 2670?
Everything on second?
Right. Very, very minor, but 7130?
Okay, they, they have to go to action then for next week?
Well...
If we don't have them as...
It's, for example, it's, it's adding, instead of NCAC, it's 16 NCAC. It's just a purely technical correct citation of the Administrative Code. Or, and there's one outdated state board policy still that has to be modified. It's whatever the board wants to do, but there's no change to the substance of the policy. It's purely a...
Okay, I just think out of procedure, if there's a change to what we see today, it has to go to action.
And that's fine.
My, my two cents, but I think it does. So which ones are they, Mr. Shaw?
That would be 7130, 4040, and 7530.
Mr. Shaw?
Just an example, the, the reference for the Public Schools Benefits Manual is the 2008/09 version. We probably want to have the 2017 version of that, since it's in our policy. It's, it's, but it is a change. If you'd like it to be action, that works fine. We can make those changes.
I just think we don't have the final copy tonight, so...
That works.
Mr. Shaw, if you'll send those to Sue and I, we'll make those changes for next week.
I sure will.
Okay, so action will be...
Madam Chair, I have just one other comment on 3110. In the third paragraph down on that one, I believe it is one, two, yeah, third paragraph where the change, where the addition of the Business Advisory Councils, it says that superintendent or designee shall periodically consult with local industries. Should we put something a little bit more than just periodically? Because I don't know, is it biennial, triennial, biannual, annual, you know? What does periodically mean? And what's the intent for that?
It says to...
What was the legislation's intent?
It says to identify certification and credentials that the board may offer to meet workforce needs. That's pretty...
Yeah, but, yeah, I see that, but what does periodically mean? I mean, is that how frequently? There could be administration procedure that would kind of designate that, I would think. Okay. You want to keep it kind of, kind of broad.
And that may be a byproduct of the Business Advisory Council, that there's a recommendation that we offer some new certification?
I see, yeah.
You okay, Mr. Schumaker?
Yep.
We do consent on that one?
We do consent. I just wanted to get a clarification on a word.
Okay, so four on action, three for minor things, one for the Business Advisory for the clarification, and, and Ms. Monroe, we'll have to add a vote for the Business Advisory Council membership then, next week? Thank you. Okay, so number 5.04, thank you, ladies. Mr. Walter has attended the Mental Health First Aid USA course, and will need approval to submit those to NCSBA. Is that okay for consent?
Consent.
Consent, okay. Thank you for going, Rob. And then Ms. Carpenter went as well. We previously had hers. Okay, so items for consideration or action at the February 12th business meeting. So the first item we have here is the salary study report. Ms. Klutz and Ms. Jones?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to invite Ricky Lopes and Kathy Eisenheier from SEC, that's School Efficiency Consultants. We've used them several times in the last decade for various projects. Most recently, they did a salary study for us, and it involved most, mostly teacher supplement-certified staff. We did administrators, school administrators, principal, principals, assistant principals, and difficult positions to replace in that study. About a year later, we've employed them again, or contracted again, to do a second study, and that would consist of the remaining staff, primarily our classified staff. And they are here to share the results of the study with us, and then I will follow up at the end with a recommendation, an administrative recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, there we go. Good evening. Thank you for allowing SEC to work with your school system again. We've had a good partnership over the last few years, and we appreciate it. You're to be commended as a board and as an administration for, for looking at the salaries of your employees, and trying to pay them a fair compensation. And so hopefully tonight, you'll see three recommendations that were made to help certain categories of employees in your, in your school system. We're not going to go through the whole report. You've obviously had a chance to, to go through it already, so we're just going to summarize a few things for you. On page four, there's a one, a short history of state funding for schools from 1970 on up to today, that kind of explains to you why locally, you're having to pick up a big share of raises and so forth for your employees. And the bottom line is, the percentage of the general fund that's going towards LEAs, or going to LEAs for public education, has gone down drastically since the 70s. So that, it's just a little brief history, in case you just want to, want to look at that and find some resources that'll, that'll document that. On page six, we list a group of employees that we did look at for you this time. And so there's about 12, 15 groups of employees that we did look at. And there were seven other school systems that we compared you to. And just as important, we also looked at the marketplace for, for this area. For example, the salaries in this area may be higher or lower than other area, other areas of the state, but we looked at federal market, Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics data, to be able to, to look at that, to see what you're competing against, so that you're not just looking at school systems. We also have a lot of demographic data, and we went over that quite a bit with you last year. But just to summarize a little bit of that, you have a fast-growing school system with a low poverty rate, and half the workforce in, in Cabarrus works outside of Cabarrus County. Half the folks work in Cabarrus, the other half work outside. So basically, for the most part, that's going to be the Charlotte area. So you're a little bit unique in that. You have such a high percentage of folks who, who live in Cabarrus that, that work outside, but that just means people want to live here. So that's a good thing. And that's why your, your student population's going up. The recommendations that we want to make, if you'll go to page 46, 47, and 48, to get cut right to the chase, there's three groups of employees. And Kelly, did you want us to go over there? Was that recommendations you were going to make?
You go ahead and do that, and I'll follow up.
Okay, all right, okay. One group that we're making... One group that we're making a recommendation for increases are your mechanics. And we've done about 12 of these salary studies in the last six months. And in just about every district that we've gone to, this has been a recommendation. We're not competing with, with the marketplace for mechanic, mechanic salaries. And as a result, it's hard to find folks with licenses that you need for the safety, for the, for your schools. It's hard to find those folks with the salaries that we're paying them. So one of the recommendations is to increase the pay grades for that, that group of employees. Another one that we're looking at is bus drivers. And in the bus drivers, you have a, a unique situation here in that you've got the Charlotte metro area that has a big transit area, transit department. And so they're able to hire bus drivers, not the school system, but the city and the county metro. They're able to hire bus drivers at a lot higher rate than what you're providing in, in here in Cabarrus. And so you're not only competing against school systems, you're competing against that. And so your, your hourly rate is a little bit on the low end. And we're making a recommendation that it be increased, but it's kind, there's not a specific number that you need to work towards because you'll never catch up to what, what they're paying, you know, in the Charlotte metro area. But any increase that you can give to them would obviously be welcome. And so our recommendation was just a two and a half percent increase at this point. But once again, that could go, could go higher. But it's going to be hard to compete with, with the Charlotte area. The third recommendation that we're making is for a group of employees that you have called school testing coordinators. And it's actually a position that's used in Cabarrus that we didn't find in other districts exactly the same way. For example, your, your school testing coordinators are classified employees, but they have some of the responsibilities of certified employees based on the job descriptions that, that we looked at. And so we are recommending they be upgraded to a level that's commensurate with data managers and, which is a significant increase for that group of employees. The other 10 or 12 groups of employees that we looked at were compensated within the range that we were looking for. And you're to be commended for what you've done in the past because you were able to, to move salaries up over the last eight or 10 years, where most school districts were not able to do that. So when we're comparing you to other districts, they're playing catch-up. And y'all have been able to, to give gradual increases during that same period. So that's why you didn't have quite as many recommendations as we see in other districts. But that's just a quick down and dirty of the three recommendations that we're, that we're making.
Thank you, Ricky. I'll follow up with our administrative recommendation. Obviously, you know, anytime you do a salary study, the funds don't just float down from the sky. So the administrative recommendation has, has a lot to do with cash flow and, and our needs. So I'll just kind of go over those with you. The attachment is in board docs. And my recommendation is to the far right. So for our bus mechanics, we're recommending that we go ahead and, and make that change effective, as you can tell, with the, the first payroll that after the board would approve it. If the board would approve that this evening, we would make that effective. The budget for that would come from the transportation budget. And we feel comfortable that the transportation budget can currently handle that expense. The, the next one is the testing coordinators. We are going to make a recommendation, you can see, SEC's recommendation was good, from a 56 to a 62, and we're recommending a 56 to 659, which is not quite as much, but we feel comfortable with that. With the high schools, instead of 57 to 63, 57 to 60. And what we would need to do with this recommendation is we would ask the commissioners through our budget process to fund that for us. So we wouldn't be able to make that effective until we've received the funds for that. So that would be, assuming the commissioners approve that, that would be July timeframe. The final recommendation is for bus drivers. And as Mr. Lopes said, the two and a half percent recommendation, we, that's a little bit pricey for us. And so what we'd like to do is do a two-phase implementation. So if the board would approve this, we would implement 1.25% for the next payroll period and then follow up with another 1.25% in January of the following year, which would be along the same timeframe as we do our compression raises for our other folks. We feel like that would get them there eventually. And it would also allow us to, to recoup some dollars with our Zoner and GIS that we use in our bus to actually help us pay for that. Are there any questions?
Did we do something for, was it our bus drivers we did something for? Or what, am I-
Yes.
So the state did give a significant increase to bus drivers this year. And we're hoping for another one in the coming year. But they did receive more than other state employees, but they, they're also in high demand and hard to keep.
But they, how much was that increase this year for them?
Carolyn? It was, it was more, I think it was more like 1,500 because everyone else got 1,000 and they were about one and a half, one and three quarters more, maybe somewhere from 1,500 to 1,750, something like that.
But that is, that, this is, I mean, that's already included, right?
Yes, ma'am, this would be on top of that.
Oh, okay, but that was taken into consideration?
Yes, ma'am.
With that, okay.
I personally was glad to see the testing coordinators on there because one, I happen to know somebody who got that job a few years ago. And I was shocked at how low that salary was considering the responsibility. So I'm pleased to see that.
I think one of the things that we found through the salary study was that most folks don't have that position. And so when that was created here, I think that's probably where the imbalance came from, is it was such a unique position and trying to fix that now.
And it's not a separate position. It comes out of a clerical allotment.
That's true.
So that is, it is unique, and that's what Ricky and Kathy talked a little bit about.
Madam Chair, I'm impressed by the methodology used to acquire this information. Again, hats off to you guys. I like the implementation plan that Kelly Klutz is recommending to us and fully support getting this moving forward.
One other question. When you're doing this, are teachers included in this study?
It depends on what the system asks us to, to look at. So some, some systems will ask us to look at certain salaries. Now, we've done two or three different, yes. In, in the first phase, we looked at the teacher supplement. Because really, the state's salary is the same for everybody. So what we look at is the local teacher supplement. So last year, when the first phase of the salary study, when we looked at more certified employees, the teachers were part of that, that recommendation.
But they were not, I mean, the supplement was not included in this one?
Not in this study?
Oh, okay.
Ms. Carpenter, as you recall, the first salary study indicated that we'd like to be at 8.75% of the teacher's salary. So we've adjusted and we're climbing. And so it's really a multi-year phase plan that we're working on. So the county's been a great support and we've been working with them. And we feel, we feel like we'll get to 8.75 eventually. But that's, that's still the goal, was the 8.75. And it came directly from the salary study that they did for us.
Okay.
And we're at 7.75?
7.68, I believe.
So this will be a part of the next budget cycle request?
Yes, it will.
How many bus drivers do we have there?
About 380, but you know, I'm counting part-time and-
How many are, so every one of them is affected, gets this 1.25?
Absolutely, it'll be a percentage of what they're employed.
What they're current, okay.
So this will go on the action agenda because of the nature of the item? Okay.
Can I make one comment, Madam Chair? So I just want to say in this study how much we appreciate that sometimes when people have done studies in the past, school stuff doesn't translate outside of that. So for example, the testing coordinator is a good example, like what's the private equivalent of that? And so SEC, Ricky was the finance officer for Cumberland County, obviously one of the biggest schools. And Kathy was in Hickory. And so they bring to that an understanding of what these are. And so we, we do want to compare to public, but also fully understand that. So their work with that is why lots of school districts have used them is because it really is a, a, a good understanding. Or if they know something's a little odd, then they actually are verifying that with the school system. So they help me understand this. So that's a big, big help that the information you have in there, I would argue, is probably the best information you have with really good information from districts. The other part of that is that what they've recommended, the county has been very responsive to that and built in kind of some inflation and cost of living to, to go with that, which is partially because of the good information that they have, but also a commitment on the county to keep up with that. Lots of places don't have that, so a big thank you to the county. And then also a thank you to Ms. Klutz and Ms. Jones, who as we work through personnel and to, to give non-certified people a major raise, which we did a couple of years ago, and then allot each one of these categories within, when we're talking about 59s and 60s, a tremendous amount of work on both of their parts to, to get that information, make sure it all works, and then make the raises work. So lots of really good information and work there that we just want to make sure that we acknowledge because it's a, it really is important and it really does put us in a good position. And then as we stated, now our teacher supplement is the, it's been, it was our number one budget priority last year. I certainly anticipate it will be the number one budget priority this year. And the county is aware of that and working with us to meet that 8.75, again, straight off of this. So, you know, we're not there yet, so we obviously want to get there. But as far as information and plan, really good information we've given to the county. The county wants that and the county is working with us on a plan to get there. So just really good, good information that we want to, you know, make sure that we acknowledge how, what really good and important work that is, because a lot of places can't say that, so.
No, I agree, and I personally like seeing all the data. I like to know the reasoning behind it, and it was, it was very clear. Any other comments, Board?
I have one. It's refreshing that you recognize that we've tried to really make an effort to, as a board and as a, as a, as the superintendent and his staff, to try to really reward our teachers and, and find a way to do it with our commissioners' help. And they have really, like, like Dr. Lauder said, they've really drawn alongside of us. And it's been a long adventure since we, since several of us first joined the board back in 2012 to try to see something happen on the local level. We know that the state is what the state is and, and, but we're, I'm just excited that y'all have helped us help this journey along. And I commend you, Dr. Lauder, for keeping them on the, keeping them with us so that we can continue to keep assessing where our, our folks are and rewarding them the way they need to be rewarded. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay.
Okay, good evening again. I bring to the Board tonight the early college calendar. The Calendar Committee looked at this this past week as well. Calendar aligns with the Community College Calendar. And the committee recommends that the Board approve as submitted.
Madam Chair, to approve?
Mr. Harrison?
Move to approve?
We're not approving tonight.
Consent?
Yeah, consent. I do have a question. I hate seeing July at the top of the calendar, but I think that's just how we have to back up to get enough days. So there's just something about not starting school at the, at the end of July. But then they finish in May, so their summer is just shifted slightly. Yeah, I think we would all be excited if we got to start on August 8th, but yeah. So I'm guessing this applies to both the Technical College and the regular early college?
That is correct.
Okay. And those principals were probably involved?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions, comments? So consent agenda for the early college calendar?
I have one question, just more as a clarification. Ms. Reimer, this, is this one based on days or hours? Because we're going to get into both, and I just want to make sure that everybody kind of understands.
So it matches with the RCC calendar, but it also graciously exceeds the required hours for the state.
Thank you.
Since we're talking about the early college, and this is not really about the calendar, but can you answer me, does our second early college have seniors yet?
No, ma'am. We're in the second year of that.
Okay, I didn't think it did, but I was just curious.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item, Ms. Reimer will still stay here with all her calendars. The proposed revisions to the previously approved academic calendar for 2018-19.
Yes. So as you recall, Cabarrus County Schools really tries and works hard to provide our families with academic calendars as soon as possible. We did that for the 18-19 school year previously, before we actually had other districts around us present their calendars. And so once those calendars came out, we, we took a quick look at them and realized that there were some options that some of those school districts were able to provide, both the staff and, and families, that we were not. And so we took our calendar back to our Calendar Committee to look at why was that? What, what had happened? And basically, Cabarrus County had been using half-days, some for professional development. And Dr. Hill and, and her department took a look at that. And based on how we currently are doing professional development, as well as working with our schools in our TLT process, we felt like those days were not well-used moving forward. And so the committee looked at that and decided that we would remove half-days to try to gain some of those days that other districts are able to provide their staff and families. And so I'd like to go through those changes with you real quick, so you're familiar with what, what they said. So the first, well, actually originally too, the first change was going to be just August 20th and the 21st to become cap days. For some reason, we left that off. When we brought it to the Board, we always cap our first two days when we have our teachers back. And so we needed to look at that previously. So that's the first change. August 20th and 21st will be capped, teacher work days.
Explain caps to the audience?
Yes, capped means that that is capped by our district, which means all staff should report to work on those days. Okay, in the previous calendar that the Board approved, we had September the 28th and October the 26th were half-days. Those were for professional development. The committee, including a parent rep, discussed those half-days and decided that we would pull those two half-days and make those full student days and create September 28th as a full teacher work day. So there will be no half-day on the 28th or October 26th. So October 26th becomes a full day, and October 28th is a teacher work day. That is also capped.
So October 26th is a full day for students and staff?
Correct.
And the 28th is only for?
Teachers.
Teachers.
Staff, yes.
So families will have off that whole weekend?
That is correct. All of the changes, let me go ahead and make that point, all the changes add opportunities for families. We do not remove any days or if, if we said we were having a day off, we don't take any of those away. We're just giving a couple more days. So if we use the other half-days, we could put another day back into our calendar. So we did that with February the 15th and March the 28th. Those two come together, those will be full student days. And we will give our families, or we're recommending to give our families, January the 2nd as a teacher work day. A lot of districts around us choose to do that day after the, the holiday. And this year, I think it was very beneficial for many of them due to the weather. We also, in the past, have used six hours, I want to try to explain this a little bit, used six hours to decide how many hours are in each day. Mr. Phel is now working with us very closely on our calendars. And we actually have more than six hours in a given day. And therefore, when he uses his formula, we're able to pull more hours throughout the school year. So if you were, we were saying we only had six hours in a school day and we really do have 6.1 or 6.2 over 178 to 180 days, that's quite a bit of time that you make up. So in looking at how other districts were able to provide a longer holiday break for, for December and January, we figured that that's how it kind of happened. And so we had Mr. Phel work on our hours. And based on the number of hours, Mr. Schumaker, the number of hours that are required, we were able to then come back into December and make two teacher work days. December 19th and December 20th would become teacher work days. So therefore, we would have a full two weeks for a holiday break. And I think that makes our staff and our families very happy. And our teachers, yes. We also, in January, January 18th was a change. That is typically a half-day for all students. That will only be a half-day for high school due to exams. However, the Calendar Committee did recommend that January 13th, which is the last day of the second semester, that it remain a half-day- of the second semester, that it remain a half-day for all families, so and all students.
I'm sorry, which day?
June, I'm sorry. June 13th, excuse me. So again, I'll repeat that we did not remove any days that we said we were going to have off, other than half-days. Our parent rep said that that's very difficult for them. We've known that, but have been committed to professional development with Dr. Hill and her staff. And the processes we're using now for teacher and staff development, felt comfortable that a full day was much better than half-day.
Well, I personally like the effort, even though I don't have children in school anymore, I like the effort to give a longer holiday break. I think that'll be much appreciated. Board members, other comments, questions?
I'm glad to see graduations on Friday and Saturday.
That doesn't change.
Did not change, correct.
Mr. Powell?
My only suggestion would be to make the October 29th work day a capped work day, and then make the November 6th an uncapped work day, just to give more flexibility there for the 6th. Because I know teachers have reached out to us in the past to ask for flexibility to participate in the election process, and if we kind of switch those, it's only a week, I think it's a week earlier there, and on a Monday, might help them out.
That takes away the weekend aspect, though, is what I'm looking at.
It does. And the county committee, the calendar committee did look at that, and again, obviously, it's the Board's decision. But we also said the number of days that you already have off in November for holidays were very helpful in that month, but in October, you would not have any. And so that long weekend would be very good for families and staff, but certainly up to the Board to tell us the direction there.
Nine weeks, right? So the theory being you get to the end of nine weeks, you're going to have to make sure all your report card stuff, conferences for elementary school teachers, that's the one day, that's usually why there's one built there, right?
So the, oh, yeah, the end of nine weeks is on October 26th.
Now, it's a student day, so that's the time to bring that to an end and start setting.
And I remember in the years that we, when we first went to the shift in the calendars, that we had a very long stretch between January and April that year, because Easter was late. And I don't even remember how many phone calls I got. It's like, we can't change the calendar now, but just something to think of is the length of the stretch. So, other comments regarding the calendar?
Well, yeah, consent. And what you articulated was articulated several times during the calendar committee about the long stretch.
Oh, yeah.
That was a recurring drumbeat. And I will say that, thank you, Mr. Phel, for your detail on every single school, because he keeps the hours for every single school in the county, and that's what made this possible, and that really, I think, helps parents out.
I'd like to reiterate that. It's not just hours. He goes all the way down to the minutes. So he has calculated every school to the minute of how many, how many, how much time. So we appreciate.
Is it consent with making, is it consent with making the 6th uncapped? Is that correct?
No, I think it's consent as-is, is what people are saying. Do you want to put it on action?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Reimer. And so next, we have the 10-year facilities plan, again. Do you have it memorized, Mr. Lauter?
I'm not really sure how I'll drive this, because everybody has their own computer. But I guess, unless you wish me to go through it again, I will just kind of hit the highlights of the things that we made sure that were in this plan, that you asked for specifically, where we reduced some of the options and that sort of thing, okay?
Can you remind people how to find, how to find this presentation? It's on the Board Docs?
Yes, sir. It's on the Board Docs, under 10-year plan. It's proposed. Everybody else has drafted, I believe. After tonight, it'd be, no longer draft.
It's drafted until we vote on it.
Till you vote on it, yes.
Yeah, still draft until next Monday.
If the public has comments on it, where can they find it? They can find it on the Board Docs under this meeting or the prior meeting, right?
And I would use the latest version, just in case there were any tweaks to it.
Yes.
Use the version from February 5th in Board Docs.
Yes, that's the latest one.
Yeah.
Because at that point in time, we froze several slides. There were options before, but you asked us to make those.
Yeah. And just as a clarification for anybody who might be watching this, to access Board Docs, you can go to the school's website at www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us. And on that website, at the top, there is a Board of Education. You can navigate to that page. And then on the left-hand side, there is a link to agendas and meeting information. Ms. Lauter?
So if you're moving along with me, slide number three, we did make sure we made that change there on Southwest Elementary School with a revised budget of $32 million, okay? Then the Roy Wilkes Projects and the PLC Projects, they all remain the same. We went through the decisions on slide number nine. What's next? We're talking about addressing the elementary schools. So we move down to slide number 12. That's where we narrowed it to the staff recommendation for the replacement of our Brown McAllister and Cultural Web of elementary schools. Our staff recommendation, and with your input from the Board, is to build our Brown McAllister on-site for 800 capacity if possible, and we are currently evaluating that. However, if it was not possible, we need to move to the adjacent site. That was our direction, okay? And then rebuild Cultural Web for 800 on an alternative site. And if not, if not possible, then we would rebuild it on the current site for 650, okay? That in alignment with your instructions, okay? And then we move to the next, where we only have a staff recommendation. It's in red there. I was just basically re-reading our staff recommendation for Beverly Hills and Roy Wilkes consolidation. It is yet to be voted on. You'll probably vote on it at a later date, but... And then the addressing middle school needs, we have moved forward to make sure that is a priority to move forward with the purchasing of land. That's on slide number 21. And that allows us to move forward, that recommendation to purchase land in somewhere in that general vicinity of J.M. Robinson High School, okay?
And, Mr. Lauter, I just wanted to clarify, because we did have an inquiry on this. The middle school alignment for J. and Fries Middle School, to my understanding, does not affect the STEM program. It proceeds as-is, and if children are in that program, they are not being redistricted. Is that correct?
It will remain a magnet. Yes, ma'am, you are correct. So we will, we will possibly increase their boundary in the realignment. I'm not sure. We'll see how that goes. But as far as the STEM magnet, it will remain a STEM magnet.
And the 10-year plan allows us to add 250 seats there, which will allow us to expand that boundary, should you wish to do so. Okay. Or both, yes. Okay. And then the next was the recommendation for the new high school development. That's on slide number 31. Our recommendation at that point in time, and I think based on our discussions, was to purchase land adjacent to Northwest Cabarrus High School and build a new 1,800-student-capacity high school adjacent to the existing school, which would replace Northwest Cabarrus High School, and it adds 500 seats to the Northwest District. Further down the 10-year plan would obviously look at remodeling Northwest Cabarrus High School for the middle school, and then would also move to purchase land in the south for an additional high school four years down the road. Okay. And with that, I guess that was all the corrections from the original presentation. Any questions or any additions you'd like to make?
Board members, think about, if you're ready to, we need to approve this next week. So whatever other questions you have, you can certainly express them now, or I would suggest no later than Thursday this week.
Yes, ma'am.
Get them to Mr. Lauter.
We're pretty good at modifying this right now, so you give it to me. We can take care of that and get it back on Board Docs.
We'll quiz you what page is.
All right, we get the, all right, you've got the mic on. All right, we get the suggestions to you, because basically on page 36, you're putting to repurpose Beverly Hills, but on page, on page 18, you're saying you're going to address Beverly Hills at a separate time. So that's why, and then...
Can you clarify the page, Carolyn? We don't have it 36.
Well, I do.
It's in the lower, if you look at the pages on the lower right corner?
I got one.
The bottom right corner, okay.
I got one.
It's very small, but it's...
Yeah.
So what I'm, because on page 36, it says to repurchase, repurpose, excuse me. So I'm just wondering what, what, what we would be voting on.
Well, we were, it's based upon on slide number 18, our recommendation to consolidate Beverly Hills and Roy Wilkes. Okay? So if you take that recommendation on page 18 or slide 18, then 36 would apply.
Yeah, it's not that, it's not the decision yet on what the alternative option would be. Those are just some ideas. So we're not going to vote on what Beverly Hills might become right now, just that we would consolidate it.
Okay. And that we would not rebuild it, okay? You're telling me you would not rebuild it, then. Because we've got a rebuild, we've got a replacement amount on page 19.
Right. That's just for the analysis, to show the cost of building a 400-student school, basically what it costs per seat, because that's the equivalent on how to compare apples to apples.
Okay.
That's our justification for apply. Our recommendation would be not to replace it on-site.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll give my two cents worth then, next week. I got three pages. So I will give my rebut, or do you want my rebuttal? I'll give it next week.
Well, if there's any, if there's any information that they need to, researchers should look at, I think, share it now.
Well, I mean, I will send it to him. I got three pages, so I know I've got my, my statement, but I will make sure that you, I'm sure he's gotten it. But I will give my rebuttal at that time. I've got three, y'all all got it, but I have, I have, I will give that at that time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Lauter? Comments? Again, try by the end of Thursday.
Again, you said you were on the fence between the central and northwest last time. What did we finally decide? Why, what, how confident are you in this is the right direction?
I think based on our discussions at the Board retreat, we talked about the growth being more pertinent in the northern portion of the county, and therefore, having that the case, we'd fill that area faster. So therefore, recommendation shifted from being in the southern part to the northwest portion. We still don't think we have enough growth in the northwest portion to add 1,500 seats to that district, but by adding 500 seats, we killed two birds with one stone, if you will, by replacing an older school and also adding 500 seats to that district. So that was, I think, our final conclusion, or at least, that was my take on the final conclusion at our retreat.
Mr. Schumaker, I know you attended the Kannapolis meeting a week or two ago. Do you want to share anything with what your perspective of the growth will be?
Well, they were looking at, a couple of weeks ago, they were looking at two developments. One, the developer has withdrawn his application for rezoning, so it was 121 homes on 50 acres, which was a little dense for the area that it was in. But that withstanding, there are still a lot more petitions going on. They've approved 575 homes within the past six months. That's in addition to the Kells Water Bridge development. I don't know what the build-out on those. In fact, the build-out for the one that withdrew was a three-year build-out for the 121 homes. So I would think that they're all expecting similar build-outs with the Amazon facility going up, that million-square-foot facility be in place, probably be by 2020 at the latest, I think, or late 2019. And so they're going to have a couple thousand folks at that facility. And so I expect to continue to grow up out there very quickly.
That's a warehouse facility, is it?
It's a warehouse, but it's going to have a combination of jobs. It's a regional facility, very different from the one that's over off of Dorada Road. This one is a very large regional facility, and it's one-of-a-kind type things that they don't carry in the facility off Dorada. So it's, it's got a little bit of different flavor to it.
And so are we, even though Central Cabarrus District has numerous housing developments that have been approved, we have not seen any movement right now to bring those forward to actually begin construction on them, whereas in the Northwest District along Johnson Road, we are seeing those actually break ground. So we feel like those are going to probably mature faster than the ones in the, in the south region around Central Cabarrus.
Mr. Lauter, the only thing I'll say is, I'm going to go back to Mr. Lauter's disclaimer, that this time next year, we may be proposing something different based on growth and what we see. So we feel that the best information we have today is, is the north, so.
So the plan, the plan can change as it's reviewed on an annual basis?
Absolutely.
The main portion, I guess, that should take away from this is we're incrementing buying land in both locations. So we do have that option. If we do not buy land in both locations, then we do not have that option.
Yeah, and get ahead, build one school and get ahead on the other one.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah. Okay. Any more discussion on the 10-year capital plan updates?
I do have one thing. And this is just a housekeeping issue. Please put a version at the bottom. We need to know what we're dealing with. When it's the final draft, we need to know that about the date and the dead, final date on it, just so we can figure out what we're looking at.
Yes.
I can see the PDF document date on the top, but most people don't read that.
Yeah, it actually did have a date, a draft and date on before.
No, that was on the commissioner one, not last week's.
Yeah, but we do need to get that on there.
I'll, I'll make sure that our title page has what draft and date.
Well, you can just put it on the pages, and it should repeat on every page.
Page footer, just like you have the page numbers, you can put that on there.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
That'd be great.
I probably can't do that, but I have a, which I can.
Okay, Board, we are at the end of our regular agenda. So I will take a motion that the Board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318 dot 11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged pursuant to General Statute 143, 318 dot 11A5, to establish or to instruct the public body staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease, or the amount of compensation and other material terms of any employment contract or proposed employment contract to discuss property for future elementary schoo, that's not correct, to discuss, to discuss property for purchase for a future school.
Second.
So a motion by Dr. Kirk, seconded by Ms. Carpenter. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we'll say good night to our audience. And again, thank you to the Mount Pleasant Middle School staff for graciously hosting us tonight. Thank you.